Like call this meeting at Manchester by the sea. Select Board to order. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Good.
Matthew here, John.
Here.
And Anne's here. Um, the first. Item is public comment on non agenda items. Is there any public comment on non agenda items here or? On Zoom?
Uh, so I'll start us off with um. A want to recognize Sergeant Newton for uh his effort and along with the Manchester Police Department and Heartmaster. Uh Department um. On Thursday during a uh routine patrol Sergeant New- Newton noticed that there was a sailboat with five teenagers on it. Uh taking on water, they were in distress and immediately responded and um. Help bring those uh teenagers to shore along with the sailboat. So just wanted to recognize Sergeant Newton for uh.
And Sergeant couldn't be in ninety. Been doing too well, but uh it was a job well done by um the officers and the other stuff that really well.
Anything else?
Well, excellent.
Excellent job.
Please relay our thanks. Outstanding.
Good day. Um. The next item is the chairman's report. Um, there is no chairman's report. The next item, that's what came up. Back to items. Does anyone have? The decisions? More changes to the action items?
There's another question. Um, um, today's. The target date for today was also the. Uh, you know, through a regional nine one one review. So I was just wondering. When we were going to? Have that discussion.
Yeah, you could go ahead.
Um, I uh spoke to Allison from Regional. They were unavailable if they're committed tonight. So, but they will get back to us. I don't even think.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, um. The next item on our agenda. Um, is a public hearing for water rates. Um, do I have a motion to enter to open a phone hearing?
I move the select board open their water and sewer rates public hearing.
Through the discussion, John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, is Chuck?
Chuck's on the call.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So uh what's in front of us today uh for the updated for the proposed rates for fiscal year twenty twenty six uh? Is a eighteen dollars and twenty five cents per hundred cubic feet on the sewer. This is a. Represents a seven percent increase. Uh last year was. The last fiscal year was a rate of seventeen dollars and six cents. The seven percent increase uh coincides with the three year. Plan of steadily increasing the rates uh for costs associated with the sewer treatment plant. Uh, so this is year two of that. Uh, the sewer only flat fee is a hundred and forty two dollars and seventy cents per bedroom per quarter. Prior year was a hundred and thirty three dollars and thirty. Six cents. Again, this represents a seven percent increase. On the water uh rates, there's no change uh to fiscal year twenty six. So the the rates will stay at seven dollars and twenty one cents. Per hundred cubic feet for the first seventeen hundred cubic feet used. Eight dollars and fourteen cents per hundred cubic feet for seventeen hundred to fifty seven hundred cubic feet used. Ten dollars and eighty cents per hundred feet. For fifty seven hundred to sixteen thousand cubic feet used. And fourteen dollars and eighteen cents per hundred cubic feet for sixteen thousand plus cubic feet used. Um, and then. A sewer capital for. Chuck, correct me if I'm step in here if I'm misreading this, but then there's just the. Is the volumetric rate?
Right, so that last one is a capacity fee for connections when people add new bedrooms or there's some other connection that's made to the system. You know, within the existing service area.
Okay, so that's seventeen dollars and fifty cents per gallon. Uh, which is total gallons per day determined by Title V flow ratings. One bedroom rated at a hundred and ten gallons per day. Uh, times seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Uh, so it's one thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars.
That's that's a one time fee.
One time fee.
Mm-hmm.
Previously, uh. This was at one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, but it's been unchanged since its inception.
Are there any questions on? Me or?
How um? What percentage of households are on only sewer, no water?
There's only about uh ten accounts.
Okay.
In that category, very small.
Yeah.
So that's all your people that have private wells but are still connected to the town sewer. Uh, and actually, over the last few years, a lot have. Actually bought a water meter from us because we will bill them on the volumetric rate. If they have a meter and so they'll basically buy the meter to make sure we're accurately charging them except for the ten or so.
So after the new meter program, how many do you think we'll have without meters?
Uh, it'll. It'll still be the same ten unless they decide at that time that, you know, they're willing to put a meter on their well line.
Okay, thank you.
I I have a question for Chuck.
Hmm.
Um, Chuck, I was just wondering how how you model the the um the monies that are coming in for the future year fiscal year twenty six. I know that you've got water revenue going up. Now, we're assuming there's no change in the billing. Uh, there are some other billing changes that occurred mid-year here. I know associated with the water meter. Are there other factors that go into that?
So are you talking about just the water side? Or are you looking at the sewer as well?
Side. Just the water.
Right. So what we what we've been looking there is the past four quarters of revenue. And then we're forecasting that against our uh, you know, fiscal year twenty six uh costs. So that's, you know, the budget that was just approved, uh, you know, and we're into now is of July one. And so that's what I'm looking at there. The additional revenue for the capital fee on the meter side. Is really going to pay for the meters. So um, you know. You recall, we did approve a bond and.
Right.
Uh, all of that for for that side of things. So that will basically. That extra money, if you will, in the enterprise fund will go directly towards that. So.
Uh, yeah, so that's not in this number. That would that would be a a separate.
Correct. We're really just looking at the operations at that point.
All right. So you're looking at the trend the past four quarters and just kind of straight lining that out.
Uh, yeah, you know, it's hard more art than science sometimes because the, you know, the. Dry air versus wet air type stuff really makes a big difference on our revenue, but just looking to make sure that. Yeah, we do have a certain amount of reserves in the enterprise fund itself. So, you know, not looking to bring that to zero, but not letting it run up too high either. So.
Well, I I just wondered, I mean, from twenty four to twenty five, the revenue went down, but I do recall, I think it was. There were drought issues. And now it's gone up quite dramatically.
Uh, right, but not so have expenses due to inflation and chemical chemical costs and stuff like that. So, you know.
I'm not uh not not looking at the expense side. That has kind of a standard trend.
Right. So that's kind of, you know, we're trying to just hit it.
Is there a move to close the evidentiary portion?
Okay. I'm saying I move that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Hey. Like a motion to approve the rates.
Yes.
Okay, I moved that the select board approved the fiscal twenties fiscal year twenty six water and sewer rates as presented.
Second.
Second.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, the. Next item on our agenda, um, are appointments to to committees introduced for appointments committees. I understand that Miranda found a is not available.
She had a family emergency.
Yeah, so we will put that on our next agenda.
Yes.
Um. And the next candidate and. Candidates are for the Facility Planning Committee. Um, and I'd like to start of. I changed the page, it feels better. Um. With Matt Bergeron.
He's on.
Yes. Uh, and what what I what we what we like to do when we're having these interviews is give you a few minutes just to explain. You you've already given us a fair amount of information, but we'd like to hear. Why what you think you bring to the facilities committee?
Sure, yeah, it's Matt Bergeron. I'm on Nine Forest Lane, Manchester, Mass. I have. Experienced in. The construction building. Facilities area within throughout my career. And I. Also a resident of the town, which is important. So I feel I'll be a good fit. For. The facilities committee. Due to my construction experience, experience with. DPW operations and other. Aspects of. Just. Construction and land and property. So I feel like I'd be a good fit for the for the role.
Thank you.
Sure.
John, do you have any questions for him from that?
Uh, yeah, Matt, I just wondered if have you uh served on any town committees in the past um at all in? This town or another towns or is this your first foray?
No, this is my first first time. So I'm eager to to get involved and help out the community the best I can.
Good, good. Have you have you spoken with or know any of the other folks that are especially the appointed one? The appointed ones from the various committees that are on on this uh committee that's being established?
No, I don't know who the other candidates are.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about candidates from the there are from four existing boards. There are people that are on this committee. Including Kathy Bellato, who's on our our uh select board, but. Just wondered if you'd been in touch with any of those folks.
I have not.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I thank you for uh raising your hand for this. Um, it's it's a new committee. So that means gonna be filling away a little bit, but um. It's very, very important with what's coming up in Manchester uh over the next, say, ten years or so. A lot of activity in this area. So thanks very much.
Yeah, I think it'll be interesting. I'm I'm happy to be involved.
Yep.
Great.
Kathy, uh, yes, Matt, uh, this Kathy Bellata, thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering. Um. Could you elaborate a little bit on your um, you say you have construction experience? Is it in the project planning, engineering? You know, could you elaborate a little bit on what types of? Facilities or buildings you may have been involved with, what your role was?
Yeah, my majority of my experience is in the project planning, management. And actual construction of. Buildings. Civil construction projects. As well as transportation.
Could you just give us a couple of examples?
Yes, we I have been involved in additions to buildings, commercial buildings. I've been involved with. Ground up construction of commercial buildings. And also. Utility infrastructure for those buildings as well, water, sewer. Electric and gas, project management and actual. Seeing the construction through to the end. End of the project.
So were you the project manager or were you part of a team, you know, part of a team that reported into the PM or? Just trying to get a sense of.
Yeah, part of the team, part of a team that reported PM.
And was it anything locally? Um. Is there any thing that you can name that we might be familiar with or? Um. Uh, any building that we might recognize or?
No, it wasn't anything local in Manchester. There was a few projects in Danvers, Mass. Davis Industrial Park. They were private buildings. Um, Beverly, Mass was a few private contractor buildings as well. Nothing municipal. Or. Building wise.
Mostly it's like for private entities, commercial, like you said, commercial. Real estate.
Correct.
Sounds good experience. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
How frequent we're gonna be, you're gonna be. Have we cut that far into the uh?
I think that's the that's the uh, the committee will have to decide.
So I'm gonna get prepared to make the the time commitment, obviously, and uh. I mean, I know if you're going days, nights or whatever.
We don't need that. We haven't.
So uh. So you're flexible as far as timing goes and cases, you know, some a lot of committees meet during the day. Is that something that's gonna be a problem for you if you're still still working?
Nope, no, I'm pretty flexible.
I'm gonna chuck this one down. Okay, Chuck, please.
Yeah, I was just saying on that one, Brian, I, you know, I don't think we've made any kind of decisions yet. I was hoping to kind of get a feel for. You know, who the people are on the committee and then, you know, I think it will be a a couple of times a month to get going. But then. You know, after that, I think, you know, we'll just kind of see where we're at and, you know, what what needs our attention and how often, you know?
Yeah, no, thank you. I wasn't sure.
Uh, I think this guy's pretty much gave me the shakedown, so. I'm pretty good. Thank you for stepping up.
No problem. Happy to be involved.
Um, have you dealt with Chuck damn at all?
Have I dealt with Chuck damn?
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
Okay. I'm sure he let us know if he's unhappy. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, the. Next, um. Candidate is Joseph Bagan. Yes.
And Joe's fine.
Joe, okay, sorry.
No, no problem at all, no problem at all. Um. So just a little bit of further background, I guess, I you've seen seen the resume. Um. I primarily kind of functioned over the years in in transportation, planning, permitting. Uh, providing support, you know, usually as a technical lead is is part of a multi-disciplinary team. Certain types of projects I would be the lead for that and have the team reporting up through me. Um. I am currently retired. I sit on the pedestrian and bike committee.
Mm-hmm.
And I also serve on the Mass dot Board of Directors where I chair the Capital Programs Committee.
John?
Yeah, so I I I I've looked at your background, Joe, you've done uh done quite a bit and you're retired. That's. That's a big plus in this instance because there needs to be certain amount of flexibility and uh. And working in this. Have uh, how long have you been on the on the Bike and Ped Committee?
Uh, I think it's about three years now.
Okay. So you know what, uh, kind of um volunteering for this service involved? Um, and you're um, you know, you're interested in expanding that horizon and getting into a different. A different area. Have you chatted with anybody who's going to be on this committee from the various committee, you know, committees or Chuck? Uh, kind of ex officio.
Yeah, I've uh had a conversation with Chuck. Um. I haven't really talked with Kathy, but we do talk because Kathy is generally at our pedestrian bicycle committee meetings. And that's.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that's that's good. I know that uh, oh, I can't remember. I I think Gordon Brewster's there, Andy Oldman. I'm not sure of all of the. The folks that are are designated to be on this committee that'll be forming in the next next few weeks. Well, great. I think you've got uh a a strong background in terms of management and fairly large projects, as I can see on your listing here. So uh, um, I'm sure that we can uh tap your your uh your wisdom and expertise. Thanks for volunteering.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, um, I'm obviously familiar with Joe from um attending the Bike and Ped Committee. Uh, Joe was instrumental, I'll just mention, and um. He was the lead on getting the speed limits changed for the um. Uh, those state roads that run through Manchester. And so uh, what I appreciate about. Appreciate about Joe in particular is his ability to get through. He knows how to navigate the state. Um. He knows how to work through permitting issues as well. Uh, I think that could be a valuable um skill set on this on this particular team as well. Um, could you just talk a little bit about um your responsibility at Harvard? Um, sounds like that was a slightly different role than. Than what you did for the on the other projects for the state. Was it similar?
Um, no, it was different. Um. You know, my. Career started working for the city of Boston, so I was there for about ten and a half years and and that was uh. In the uh Austin Planning Group with the Transportation Department. Then I did stepped out, did consulting for about twelve years. Um, Harvard was different. Um, I came on board. As part of a team that was uh charged with doing the development in in uh the property that had been purchased in Austin.
Mm-hmm.
So I was the. Subject matter expert on transportation issues and and doing permitting planning. Um, over time that morphed a little bit because as uh people left, I picked up different responsibilities. So that towards the end, I was also. Uh, charged with doing uh some of the utility master planning. Um, I. The types of projects I worked on there, uh, I don't know if you how familiar you are with the area, but there's a the new science complex down there. That's one of the projects that I worked extensively on. Um, I was responsible for the design work. When I say I I was responsible for managing somebody who actually did the work on the uh. Developing the, you know, the roadway infrastructure, the bicycle infrastructure, um. Uh, all, you know, all of that. And then also planning out the uh. The uh acreage for the Enterprise Research Campus. So that involved. Um. Identifying, you know, developing new street grid. Identifying where utilities could be located, navigating over, you know, some fairly substantial uh public utilities that were in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering for something else, too.
Right?
Thank you very much. I'm stepping up. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. You have a great resume and speaks for itself, so. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
If he's endorsed by the whole rest of them, what can I say? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's I'll do my best to look up to that.
Okay, um, the next candidate is um.
Will be set.
Will be set. And we have a letter. This week online.
Will, are you on the call?
Don't think he is.
Okay. Okay, I guess. That is the end of our committee. Thank you all. Both very much. Um. I think it's important that we speak to everyone we appoint.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is so.
Why don't we put off a decision until next meeting?
Yep.
And and would.
I don't.
Will and tracking down and.
Yes.
Get him in.
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is um. Well, we've deferred the appointment. Of committee members and Debbie will make note of that. Make sure you don't forget it next time.
Yeah.
Um, the quarterly review with the police chief.
We're right along, fine.
Yeah, I brand new that.
Yes. Well, I'm missing two of the interviews.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a little bit, yeah.
I saw you have my memo right here again. Like the. Another quarter, it just keeps ticking away. Time keeps ticking away, so. You don't want to notice it. Yeah.
And it's gonna be a half a dollar next time.
So we've done a lot of work with uh our regional shelter plan. That's finally uh coming to the the final phase. We did a uh. Public safety awareness video um over at Gordon with the with the assistance of the Chief Deckard over there. Um, that should be coming out uh shortly. Um, one of the other things we did this last quarter is we had a hazmat tabletop exercise. Over here at the Legion with the KPN Regional Emergency uh Planning Committee. Uh. And we'll have a gonna have a regional hazmat plan uh out of that table talk exercise. So that's a work in progress. Um. I know there's been some. Concerns and issues about parking enforcement, but I brought up the the new stats today. And that's the Jeff. Um, our parking enforcement uh has it's it's has an expanded role uh pretty much this year. Um, the numbers, you know, reflect themselves. Um, where we're um expanding up Pine Street, uh, out Bridge Street, um, School Street, all the town. Uh, municipal lots out to uh Raymond Street, White Beach and and uh. Et cetera. The safety sticks are are working uh pretty well. Um. They've had some vandalism with those two or three times. However, uh BBW has been able to just come out and stand them back up. And the uh. The municipal parking solutions has, you know, confirmed that they're still working. So. So things that progress kind of is that. Um. The. Our enforcement, we stepped up some evening hours due to some uh increase of cost of service for. Some alcohol related issues uh after, you know, in the evening uh after regular business hours. Uh, so you probably see that out there uh as we saw Sergeant News, we had a um. Successful uh assist the other day. Um, and his efforts have been uh pretty good. All uh some along as he's the one that designed out there with with Andy and uh uh. By. Uh, Lieutenant McCoy brought him tonight because he just uh recently. Uh, completed the two week eighteen module program of the uh Five Star Chiefs Executive de uh Institute through the FBI uh. Law enforcement Executive Development Association. So that's a huge plus for him. Um. And also the community policing keeps. Keeps going. We've had the end of year ice cream social. Uh, Chief McNally and I had coffee with chiefs at the Laughing Gulf. We just had public safety day with uh down at uh Mount Genoma Park with the Parks and Rec. We had state police, K nine and the mounted unit there. So that went up very well. Officers participated in the Special Olympics Cruiser Convoy to Harvard University to support the uh Special Olympics. Um, there they represented some of the athletes with some uh medals, uh, you know, that they won. Um. We had uh senior care meals on wheels breakfast that we that we uh attended. And we had our second annual uh softball game against Essex, the police and fire. We won again, thank God.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
He wouldn't have mentioned it if they.
And he threw in the injuries. Uh, we had no injuries this time, thank God. But I just want to shout out Sean Mullins, Officer Mullins and firefighter Bill uh. Sicola that they did a phenomenal job with uh putting that together. And he raised, I think, about fourteen hundred dollars for the uh Rockport Fireman's family that.
So wow, it's good.
We're on having another one in the fall.
Yeah.
That's cool.
So that was a really good time. Uh, other than that, things that are progressing and um, you know, with. Moving forward. Any question?
Would Lieutenant McCoy just give us a brief outline of what you learned at the?
So it was a uh two week eighteen module, as the chief said, um, budget administration, um. Public and private partnerships, uh, officer wellness, how to put a uh officer wellness program together. Um, it was very intensive. There was a lot of um. What uh. Crisis uh control and media relations. So it was pretty uh. Great class. And I think just being around thirty five other law enforcement executives from thirteen other states and just. Blending in and doing a lot of group work really helps. So. It's a great program.
Sounded very meaty.
That's good. John?
Yes, uh, thanks. Thanks for the report, chief. Um, I read through it and after hearing your uh your discussion. I read through it and after hearing your discussion of it, I'm particularly impressed with the community policing initiative that you've got going. You've got quite a few on the list. I realize it's summertime and that's an opportunity to take advantage of that. So I'm impressed that everything is going along well and you know, I see you. I'm around town, not this week, but I'm around and I see you out and about. And in particular, I've got to say that with regard to Sergeant Newton's fast action with those sailors last week, I think that brings home the point that our public safety staff is out there twenty-four seven. And his fast action, the fact that he is out there, and it was great that he happened to be there at the at the right time and made the right decisions to help those kids out. But it reminds us all that you're always there.
Yep, yep, thank you. One thing I did, I forget to mention Daisy, she's been out and about and she's the corporate program, so if you can spend some time with me, I just believe in making this.
Yeah, great report. I'll echo what John said. Really pleased with the community policing. You guys have a long laundry list of stuff. It's fantastic. And also, I appreciate the, you know, the increased parking enforcement. I can certainly see them walking up and down Pine Street every day. You know, it's great. I did have a question about, you know, we've received some feedback about White Beach and stuff like that. Could you like, what's the expectation? So White Beach doesn't have a, you know, like a big parking lot like singing. What can residents expect?
So years ago, when I was a parking enforcement person, White Beach, Parks and Rec were in Mount Genoma Park, too, the staff personally, like a parking
I see, okay.
So that, due to budget reasons, I don't know why, and the change from the police department to the Parks and Rec, that is obviously no fun. So what we do is parking enforcement, they'll do, depending on how busy it is downtown, two or three times a shift, they'll go down there. But what happens? People see them. And then they leave. They circle by Poges Street and come back.
Got it.
You can't be there twenty-four seven, but if people have complaints or sees something, I suggest that they stop.
Okay, so it's
A lot of it stems from people used to years ago have that parking, I mean, that feature kind of, or that parking.
Is there, I guess what I'm wondering is, because when I drive through, I always drive through there when I go to Gloucester. It's just a nice drive. I haven't yet seen it full, but it just may be the time of day that I go there. So is there a specific time when we know that there are lots of folks there possibly violating or?
They tend to go first thing in the morning and then probably around lunchtime or a little bit after and then before they go.
Okay.
Maybe a regular schedule isn't the best.
Well, that's maybe, yeah, it is. But again, that varies.
Yeah, I would definitely suggest changing it up. And I think, you know, like you said, it's always about the money. So it's, you know, what is the value of having somebody there from, you know, monitoring the stickers like Parks and Rec does at Singing Beach? Is it worth having a part-time employee there during the summer? I don't know, but no one's ever presented a cost to me, so I don't know. I don't know why we're not doing it. Maybe it is too expensive, but I've never seen the numbers. So as we're going into the budget planning season, it's something to take a look at. Residents can vote yes or no, you know. I have no idea how much something like that would cost to because you're right, if it used to be done, the residents who have lived there for a long time are probably thinking of that.
To that point, we used to remove snow every day. Budgets being what they are.
Right.
You know, I look at it a little differently. I think that we should concentrate on the downtown area. Okay, we're looking to turn over parking spots for retailers. And when they're out on either side of town, they're not turning not enforcing, people aren't going to see that. Because I know if I don't see someone there as a guest and I pull in, I've got three or four hours. Because they haven't made it up this way and this, that's what they're, right? So I, my preference would be that yes, it would be nice if you could swing by the other areas, but I think if we're trying to improve and make downtown business more viable, we have to turn to the spot.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree with that. I guess my point was, it sounded like, because they don't, they're not the garden keepers at Singing Beach. It's Parks and Rec.
Well, it used to be the police.
It used to be the police, okay. But I wasn't sure if there could be a Parks and Rec employee watch, you know.
I don't think Parks and Rec can give a parking ticket.
They can't give a parking ticket, but they, but they can.
Because our parking enforcement people are non-res.
That's right. So because I think the concern isn't so much turn in that other area. It's not turnover of spaces so much as the perception that alcohol plays a large role in the people who are there for extended periods. Whether or not, you know, I don't have any evidence one way or another on that, but that's the perception. So I just you know, I'm just in general in favor of if we're going to have a sign that says residents only, we figure out a way to enforce it. You're doing the best you can with what you have right now. And I don't know if there's any other solutions, but we should talk about it and take down the signs.
Chief, you've also, let me know earlier, there's been about thirty or so tickets written in that area.
Twenty-four, I saw the chart.
So you swing through there, what, a few times a day?
And scurry around and
We'll swing through there through, obviously.
I don't know quite how to do this, but perhaps during the budget process, we should get Parks and Rec and the police together. Talk about how best to enforce parking at the other beaches and I know Debbie's ready to balance. All I need is
No, but the report is great. I think it's just, you guys are doing great. And I'm really pleased to see the emergency preparedness. Everyone's coming to an end and look forward to those PSA videos. Thank you.
Just congratulate you and your team on another great quarter. It's glad to see Lieutenant McCoy get through his FBI training. That's great. My other question, how many hours are you on the water?
Forty hours a week.
And what is that?
Times more, depending on the level.
What? Is it eight hours a day or how do you? Every day?
And what we've been doing is we've been standardizing the shift. So one of the things, one of the benefits now that Andy is a certified police officer, so he's been changing his, some of his hours to come in at like two o'clock and work till ten. And if we have the third person scheduled for the four to midnight shift instead of banning the the front desk, that person's been going out with Andy. With the option of them being able, obviously if something happens on the street, they come back in. That's kind of what we do for those actual controls.
Yeah, so that's great. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank both you and Chief McNally for coming in and rescuing me when I request the part. The emergency responses here are just
Very good coordination and communication between all three departments.
And they're very competent and very willing to help deal with some things that I didn't want to look at. So, thank you.
Also, Chief and Lieutenant, thank you for spending some time with me. You know, showing me around the facility and introducing me to your team. You guys clearly have a very good group. And certainly, you know, the facility element of it is a hot topic for us because that's definitely poses a lot of challenges. And then, and we talked a lot about, you know, emergency management and how important that you know, element of response will be when, you know, storms or disasters come. So you know, constantly departments like ours are being asked to do more with less. And you guys are, you know, making the most out of, you know, being as efficient as possible with the budget that you have and obviously getting a lot out of it. So thank you and look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
We need to do the tour around town when I get home.
Thank you very much, guys. Zach Johnson does a great job on Fire's Community Policing Goes at the
There's two concerts.
So, I mean, he's out there engaging with the kids. And John and I just got a badge sticker last week, so I'll do that.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Review of the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the last quarter was very busy for the fire department, both call volume wise as well as training and interviews. We had firefighter Kenyon resign to take a position with the Salisbury Fire Department. And we had, thanks to some pre-planning, we had the ability to have a hiring list in place. Firefighter George Black started actually this morning at eight AM. And he came over from Gloucester. He's a full certified firefighter and paramedic. So he was going to be doing a week of days and then he'll be assigned to a group starting the end of next week. We had the ability and it helped us both budgetary wise and training wise. We've had the ability to utilize our regional training grant with Essex in order to offset some of our training costs. So that allowed us to free up some budgetary money at the end of the year that we're utilizing to do some minor station renovations to help us potentially in the future, if we hire diverse work staff, the station will be ready for, or potentially ready for that change. The other things that are kind of going, oh, go ahead. What is it?
Does that translate to a women's dormitory?
It translates to some partition walls. It's, you know, minor modifications to you know, meet a short-term objective. The station still needs some significant upgrades long-term. And that's one of the things I noted in my report is kind of having a direction when we look at our boiler system, the flooding situation and things like that, knowing, you know, are we looking for short-term fixes for the next five to six years? Are we looking to, you know, push that out to fifteen or twenty years? And just so we kind of, we're fiscally responsible in our upgrades of the station and fixes. So obviously, that's a much larger discussion that we're currently working on, but that's certainly on the, one of the top priority items for me is making sure that our facilities can maintain and support our staff for our responses. Equipment wise, our ladder one during some pump training had a pump failure. The manufacturer, Rosenbauer, has been very responsive. They're replacing the entire pump. It's actually set to ship from Australia. I think either this morning or tomorrow. And it'll be put in by the dealer in Plainville. They've also agreed to start the warranty from scratch from when we take delivery of the truck. And they've also had some promises built into, you know, if something happens in the future, they're going to take care of that and extend the warranty as well. So they've been very responsive fire trucks, as in everything in life has become very electronic. I'd rather pull a lever and actually feel the lever pulling instead of, you know, talking to a computer system, but that's not the world we live in now. So they've been very responsive and I've been very pleased. Angel One had some significant electrical issues at the end of June that we were able to rectify, but that is certainly coming to the end of its life as a frontline pump. It can certainly be used as a backup pump, but it's getting very tired. So I'm hoping that that will hold and maintain us until the new pump comes July first of twenty-seven. And we're still borrowing a Linfield pump. They've been very, they're building two new stations, so they don't have the ability to house it. So they've let us borrow it. And then while our ladder truck has been out of service, Beverly has allowed us to borrow their ladder, too. They will be taking it back this Thursday as they have some scheduled maintenance on their primary ladder truck going forward. Any questions on equipment or stations? All right. Grant wise, I heard that we are very likely to get our SCBA grant, which is great news. That's going to be in the tune of high one hundreds to low two hundred thousand dollars worth of SCBA and potential fill station. We have applied for a safer grant, which would bring our staffing up to five a shift, but we would drop to a four-man minimum. And then there's some, you know, discussions we can have about staffing long-term during attrition and things like that. Obviously, you know, hot button topics are the fire that happened in Fall River and the wildfires. One of the things that, you know, I've said time and time again is, you know, we're an insurance policy for the town. And the difference between four people working and three is if there's no life hazard, three people can't go into a building to put a fire out, we have to stay outside. If there's a life hazard, then the three people will do what they have to do to make a difference. But if there's four people working, we can always go in, two in and two out, to hopefully mitigate a situation. So that's kind of the difference. Obviously, we don't have a facility like they have in Fall River, but we certainly have large square foot homes with significant dollar value and life value. I recently submitted a grant to NIRAC in hopes of upgrading some of our portable radios to current standards. And then public outreach, we've had great success with public outreach. And then in the fall, we'll be back into the schools and the elderly housing complexes to do safer, safe programs and senior safe programs. And then our lockbox program has continued to flourish. And we're going to be looking at doing a house safety check for the elderly, looking for trip hazards, seeing if they have safety bars in the showers and trying to mitigate any significant injuries before they happen. And lastly, I just want to, you know, Todd had mentioned, but the working relationship between police, fire, harbor master, DPW, and honestly, all the town departments is second to none. You know, the success we have is based upon all of us working collaboratively. And I couldn't be happier with the working relationship that we have. And I finally took a vacation at the end of June and Captain Cavender stepped right up and it was a seamless transition while I was gone. So I just want to publicly thank him as well.
Yeah, looks like another great quarter. I have a question about you have Call Fire, you have some interviews scheduled. What is your Call Fire quota?
So we have six slated spots in the call department. Firefighter Sicola was brought up to the full-time department probably two or three months ago, so his spot remains open. And within budgetary constraints, I'm looking at potentially adding a seventh position because we have a couple of people that are in town that are interested in the call department, which I think that we should grab their enthusiasm. We will have to send them to the Call Ball Academy. So part of their interview process, we're seeing what their availability is for the Call Ball Academy. Over the years, the training requirement has drastically increased, which has kind of slowed recruitment process of Call Fire founders.
Great, thank you.
Was that me?
Yeah, that's you.
Yeah, okay. Couldn't quite hear. Yeah, Chief, I want to congratulate you. A very, very smoothly running machine you've got there now. Looks like the quarter went very, very smoothly. And in particular, you're anticipating what your personnel issues are going to be and lining up appropriate people to do what uh needs to be done to uh uh provide a seamless service to the town. So I don't have any specific questions, just the observation that uh I'm glad to see that things are going very well and congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Um chief, great report. Um really pleased with um like John said, the it's like you got a crystal ball. You're doing really well planning for those uh um attrition situations, whatever they may be. So thank you for that. I did have one question around, um, you know, we talked a lot about the brush fires, the last, I think the last time we we reviewed um had this conversation and, you know, there was something posted on Facebook last week about concerns with powder house people setting fires there and um I know you said you had cleared some of the brush in some of the wooded areas. Can you give us an update on whatever fire prevention efforts you have done? Because it is, it's getting toasty out there and, you know, a drought is probably soon coming and I think it's a valid concern that the residents have.
Yeah, certainly. Uh so early in the spring, uh the crews have been doing uh wilderness training. We actually did a combined evolution. We had a simulated patient that was having allergic reaction um actually in powder house woods. And we, you know, kind of did a comprehensive training exercise where crews had to use GPS, our technology that we've instituted through our first due program, uh regional dispatch to find the person um and treat the person. And then during that, we've also gone in with uh during ATV training exercises and checking uh wood access, the fire roads. They used to be able to, you know, um accept a pickup truck with a pump. Now, some of them have uh become a little narrower, but we've made sure that our uh skid ATV unit has accessibility. The KPN um Wilderness Fire Prevention, I'm gonna mess up the acronym, plan. Uh basically, the next round of that is to look at high hazards and see if we can do some mitigation of uh the forest and um areas that are considered a high risk to thin the forest and uh reduce the risk. But crews are out there uh practicing uh and training out there and making sure that we have access to the woods. We'll be doing some public service announcements as well. And then kind of coupled with what uh Chief Fitzgerald said is one of the things from the fire department is being twenty four seven. So uh between police and harbor, they've done an excellent job of having water coverage, you know, eight AM to ten PM. But, you know, God forbid, something happens in the overnight. Um, you know, that's where we're all gonna be coming together. So we've been working very closely with uh Bayon and Andy and the Harbor Masters Office and uh the police department in order to make sure my goal is to have two boat operators on duty uh on each group. That way, if somebody's off on uh PTO time, et cetera, we have some redundancy there. So twenty four seven, there's a boat operator on duty uh to be able to respond. So we have been looking at those high risks, wood and um marine potential emergencies.
Thank you.
I don't know, I just uh everything I could say has been said. Again, I could say this probably every time I give this a thought, that I think that our public safety and DKW, oh, you know, is the second to none. And I'm sure that there are a lot of small towns and small communities that would envy what we have going on here. And that's attributed to you and uh Chief Fitzgerald and Harbor Master and Chuck. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh chief, I just echo what I said to um Todd is that thank you for uh welcoming me to the team. I was able to spend some time over at the fire station uh and get introduced to the facility and to some of the members of the team and, you know, whatever you want to said so far has been said to me ten times over about uh all the work that you and your team do, so um looking forward to working with you some more and um and again, uh, you know, the facility there and the direction that the chief's looking for from us is a is a real need for us to kind of get our hands around and make some important decisions here, so I'm glad he brought that up.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The cohesion among the public safety departments is really hugely nice. Something that has not always been here and it is good to see it.
And and you know, one other thing I'll mention is, you know, we don't do a lot of uh PR on our medical response, uh just because we're kind of um our hands are tied with HIPAA laws and things like that, but you know, the response between police and fire to, uh we've had some significant medical emergencies over the past quarter. And that seamless response, um like you guys have said, is second to none. It has nothing to do with me. It has all to do with the staff on the road at the police department and the fire department, but uh they do an exceptional job and it's something sh- uh surely to be proud of.
Thank you. Wow. Oh. The NIS office. John, did you have anything?
I I just probably have one item dealing with um the seniors, council on aging. Uh the friends had a meeting, they have a meeting every um Monday morning. And I know that uh Cape Ann Transit was supposed to come by uh this uh this morning and orient people on the new service that will be starting during the first week of August. Uh you do need to pre-register if you're gonna call them so that they just have as a matter of record who you are. And they were going to uh, some people have already done that, but more were going to sign up. And that will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays starting August. I'm not looking at a calendar, but like August sixth or seventh or something like that, so. Uh that services will be off and running very soon. But um that's all I have and I did not, I was not at that meeting. I do uh, I don't have any comments with regard to DPW or the library or uh or the Historic District Commission at this point.
Thank you. Um, yeah?
Uh planning board, um Teague and Bond put on a presentation to update our hazard uh mitigation plan, which started in, our original plan was put into place in twenty eighteen and it needs to be updated every five years, so we're right at that point now. Um, of course, climate change, sea level rise, coastal storms, flooding are our biggest concerns, as we all know. Um, they're working on identifying assets and the mitigation needed to uh bring those up to where we need to be. Um, buildings, roadways, culvert, uh delayed EMS responses and uh damage to utilities are some other concerns. Uh they had a discussion on Sweeney Park. It looks like there's really no viable space left to build onto. It's pretty much small, which we all know, so. Any plan moving forward is probably going to look like adapting the space we have now to be more usable and drainage is gonna be the biggest plan there to get water off the field and out of the parking lot. So uh that was that. Um there's a little discussion on driveway and curb cuts where the DPW falls and where the planning board falls. They had a hearing for special permit to repair the seawall at Six Ashland Ave out here. Just basically just replace someone's already there. And yeah, that's it, I think.
Anything new at at the tech?
I actually have a meeting Thursday morning, so I'm hoping to get some more info there.
Well, just to jump on the uh I have Jeff said, I know that the the Sweeney Park has been on the agenda a couple of times with the the passing of that. And Nate's been working closely to kind of get physically a bit, to make it more uh user friendly for both and and the high school being able to use it. Um, also, we can uh they're going to put ConCon shortly. It's gonna be new, they went for a new uh scoreboard up at Coach Field Field. So that it gives the sub-bas and teams the field they uh playing on a real field, plus it'll be um it's gonna be electron, it's gonna be uh remote, so that when these uh when other groups rent the field, they'll be able to use the scoreboard as well.
It's gonna go.
Uh it's gonna go where it was before. Remember it was and they're gonna put it back up and then oops, something happened to it.
By the end of the path, but.
Uh it's, I think it's uh, so the problem is that although the footings are still there, I think they might have to just start to go. And so it'll go back where it was, so it's somewhere, you know, somewhere more. Uh, successful for July. I thought it was successful, I don't know. Yes, and we had a plenty, we did have a door. We gotta slow John's kid down.
But he said there was enough candy, so I know what I'm talking about.
I tried to catch up to that. I almost spilled my drink. The uh, so that's that, I've got uh CBA meeting on Wednesday night. There was some issue, but everything's, yeah, everything's good.
Um, so we had a conversation with the downtown improvement projects committee at our last meeting, and so they have had a meeting since then and have uh embraced the task given them to um come back with a new charter or an adapted charter based on the feedback that we gave them. Their major themes um as to how they're going to attack the the charter is to definitely, they want to rebrand the committee itself. Um, in the existing charter, there's a lot of detailed, there are a lot of detailed items that are really DPW responsibilities, so they want to remove those from their charter. Um, they wanna um add some focus around the um uh how to appoint members, you know, have maybe having some three year staggered appointments, et cetera, so the whole committee isn't turning over every year or whatever. We don't have to reappoint everybody every year. Um, and so they think of themselves as the glue. Um, their major theme is thinking of themselves as the glue um for connecting to the downtown, um connecting the downtown businesses and the residents together. And if another committee needs to do something in the downtown and they really don't know where to go, um, they could always come to this committee to um, you know, get their thoughts. So there, that's kind of the, those are kind of the big themes that they're thinking about. Uh they don't meet again until September, so uh I know they're gonna do a lot through me uh email and a sub, small subcommittee they formed, but I'm not sure if I expect anything from them until they meet again and gratify them in September. Okay, and I think that's it.
You look puzzled.
Actually, I'm thinking about uh Festival by the Seas on Tuesday, I mean, that uh.
Saturday.
Yeah, we're from Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, have we done anything about getting a table in a I don't know.
Have you?
I haven't done anything. I'll I'll contact Mike tomorrow.
Actually, John usually does the, John, you have a sign? That we usually put up at Festival by.
Yeah, um, I was gonna send a note to uh Debbie. Debbie's in the room, yes.
She's nodding her head.
Yeah, she knows where that is or thinks she knows where it is?
I do.
Good. And I I think we might have had a tape, did we have a tabletop sign that maybe had dealt with like the issue of the moment? Yeah, I guess uh we did last year and that was the MBTA. I don't know that we have the issue of the moment because the the sign is 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 generic.
I think I think Brian's question was, did we request a spot so we have a table to sit at?
That I don't know. Brian, you you're usually in the middle of that, aren't you?
I'll reach out to Mike's brother, because I did remember that there was talk in one of the packets or something I read about the mermaid.
Yes. Oh, right.
Yeah, she was gonna set up next to us.
Yeah, I remember that.
Do we have a space and do we have a space?
Right.
I will try to miss this.
Okay.
I I I think she is, she has a booth. She has a booth and I'm not sure where she is, but I did see an email in that regard.
And I'll just follow up with Stroh.
Yes.
So you'll send a note to us and then we can work schedules as to who's banning the table?
Yes. Humanizing. Who's banning the table?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um school committee isn't going to be until late August. They they except for a summer retreat and I think I'm gonna let them have their summer retreat in private. Um the, I was at the finance committee and they went over the um financials for the last year and moving money around and questions, why did we end up moving so much money around this year? Um and um, part of it is that they don't have, they, their free cash, their cash reserves are lower than they have been in previous years and that's the way those things are normally dealt with. And instead, they actually had, stuff had to be pulled out of one budget that was under and put in another budget. And they'd rather not do that anymore. Um, they're um working on um tracking the spending of the um launch service. There are fewer people signed up for a subscription this year than last. Um, and there was discussion about how long the boats last, how long the engines last, what do we do for depreciation and and so they're they're on top of that. Uh they would like to get a big a vehicle schedule for everybody who has vehicles, including what it is, when it was bought, something about major service. Um, and they have, they are perfectly willing to work on it, but they need to get the information. Um, and so they would, they might be more specific vehicle practice. Um.
Shouldn't each department have?
Yeah, I Andrea and I were at that meeting. Um, there is a fleet schedule. I don't know if the finance committee has ever had a copy of that or if it would, if, you know, they might desire a different format than what we have. Um, but we have to maintain a fleet schedule for insurance, uh so.
You can get, I mean, I don't know if we have enough to do it, but you can get fleet software that'll track it right down to every oil change, every
Right.
one it's, you know, everything.
Right, and I think we, I think we do that in-house. I think uh either Nate or DPW does a, does a lot of that uh in-house. Obviously, the finance committee is not worried about those like very specific details, but more, I think that what they were looking for is a higher level of um, you know.
Purchases and.
The, yeah. You know, the fleet, the year that it was purchased. Yeah, major repairs. Expected life, you know.
Yeah.
Um, estimated cost of replacement, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Something that came up, which I hadn't thought about is that since we've worked so hard, staffed the police department with the hopes of eliminating much of the overtime, the policemen aren't making as much as they used to. And there was a concern that that would make our police department less attractive as an employer um than other departments where um predicting senior officers have an opportunity to take on a lot of overtime. And uh, hmm, that's.
Yeah, we that wasn't, yeah, that wasn't necessarily a comment, you know, that aimed from our police department. It was just a part of the discussion about, you know, wanting to try to shrink the amount of OT and how there's the other side of that coin is that, you know, it's.
Yeah, we we're so busy worrying about the financial impact of overtime that that we haven't.
Some departments have trouble filling slots, so.
As far as.
Where's that?
For detail work and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we pay as much, I think, at detail. Uh, expenditures of lessons in around surrounding towns too. Is that any call? And so if you could work in Gloucester or work in Manchester for a ship, you gotta go Gloucester. Detail work.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Because they can work anywhere.
Yeah, on detail work, right. Yeah, on detail work, right.
And uh. So I guess you gotta find that sweet spot between. It's something. Having and having something for the guys, but not chasing people to fill slots either.
Yeah, after police reform, um. Maintaining staff, retaining talent has become more of a challenge, the chief put it spoke about it. Uh fire department has the same challenges too, but especially after police reform where, you know. Uh reserve officers are required to have the same type of training as a full-time officer, uh you know, it has caused such a. Uh change in keeping, keeping people on board and 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 officers moving to other towns, I know. You know, in my past experience that when officers have decided to leave for another town. OT availability is has been a topic that has come up in the past, you know, or what those detail rates, you know. It, you know, contract obviously is a big piece of it, um but so we were just kinda talking about. Finding that sweet spot, you know, if you push too far this way, it could have a negative, an unintended negative impact as well.
And we raise. Because a lot of the detail work is paid by by the private uh contract, right? In national grid or whatever.
Right.
We could look at maybe raising that goal fee or something like that.
That'll be part of contract negotiations when the time comes, I'm sure.
I mean, you look at every time they publish, everyone's, uh especially police and fire, mostly police. They make more money on overtime. And detail work, they're like doing their base salary.
That's the other, that's the other uh caveat, I guess, when you're in those negotiations is um. You know, the detail rate is one of those things that may not cost the town too much money, but if the detail rate. Becomes so far out of line with the OT rate, you know, your officers are deciding between whether to pick up a shift or work a detail, so you have to kinda. Think about all those dynamics when you're in the, when you're in those negotiations.
I'm so glad I did, sure. Okay, uh there was a mention of a review by the DOR, DLS. Um and my notes aren't very good, and we did it last in two thousand and twelve, and this finance committee would suggest. Bring in the DOR and do another overall.
Right, so divisional local services will perform a financial management review or overview. Uh of of municipality, it does require select boards uh vote to request, request it. Um Manchester by the Sea had it done in two thousand and twelve, so it's it's time to have it updated. Um it's not an audit, it's uh, it doesn't come with, you know, action items that you have to do or else you'd be negatively affected in your. Your audit later down the road, it's it's just recommendations, and actually a lot of the recommendations in the twenty twelve. Report have already been uh taken care of, so it would make sense to bring them in um. Talk to uh, we like, I talked to uh DLS and they they're probably a few months. Of a few months of a wait right now with other towns already in line, so um. We may bring that.
Could you put that on our action item for our next meeting?
We spoke about it, they were all on board in that meeting, I felt like they were all on board of like, yeah, we should have, let's. A lot of them have hadn't uh actually.
Read it.
Read it or seen it, cause it predates a lot of the members on the committee, I think, so. They were, they were in favor of.
Abby's been a master long time, but I think we came in in two thousand and twelve.
Alright, so we just, just have to put on a uh agenda and vote on it.
Yeah, I got it on that.
There was a report on the DTW which was peculiar. And and I guess I would turn to you, Tony, and say, what's the progress on the culvert? What's the possibility that, when and can that work be done? And um what are we going to do about the rotunda? Since we lost the funding.
Yeah, we have, so uh we, I had that on my uh town administrative report, I can.
No, don't, don't.
Speak to it now.
Just save it for.
Really, we're just gonna talk, talk about it briefly anyways. But with the Culver project, we are dealing with two different um. Short-term issues right now with our chapter ninety-one license, uh and also with MIBA. There was a ten-person appeal filed with MIBA, uh so we have a call with Tori from. Uh the director of MIBA tomorrow at noon and uh we'll be issuing a response to that appeal uh by Wednesday. So we'll, we still have, i- it's hard to say really how the timing of that will work out, uh Nate also had a call with uh the. Brick program uh staff uh to talk about potential ability to. Perhaps procure materials and draw down that grant if it doesn't seem like we're gonna get through the permitting process to actually get into construction. Before the grant expiration date and if that sounds like it's, it's possible. Uh so we're really just evaluating all of our options to keep this project moving forward.
The finance committee will be scheduled to meet next on the third Wednesday in October. So you won't hear from me about them for a while, um I also went to a board of health meeting. Um the first issue was of the dates and they appeared with a lawyer. Um who made a much clearer case of what was going on and what could be done and the um. Board of Health voted not to condemn the building, but to require bi-weekly reports on the progress and I'm sure everybody will be driving by and looking at it. But there were roofers there. Yep.
I mean, not ready.
I I think, I think the threat of condemnation got their attention to the point where they're getting the the help that they need. And the next. Part of that meeting was um about the Health and Human Services Department and what. They. Helps, help human services would affect really the um. The town employees in the health department and not so much the um board of health. And the board of health doesn't seem to recognize that completely. Um and and it may be. Easier to deal with them if we, if it's made clear to them that that. It is not intended that the head of the Health and Human Services will be making policy decisions for the board of health. But they will be making policy decisions for the use of the town employees. And. It was a long discussion of that left before it was over.
I I committed to uh working with the board of health uh on making some adjustments to the job description to. Alleviate their concerns. Um the with uh. With this issue plus um Nancy's expected retirement and the rec. Uh department being in the middle of their season, I also let them know that we're holding on uh the start of this for a couple of months. Uh so we have some time now to kinda work out some of those uh issues and hopefully move in the right direction.
That's all I have for that. Next we are into consent agenda. Um. Are there any items on the consent agenda that people would like to eventually discuss?
With the reappointments, part of the consent agenda? Yes, I'd like to discuss that.
Is there a um mood to approve of the other items on the consent agenda?
Move to select but approve the consent agenda minus. Annual, annual appointments, I guess.
John?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, um the appointments to committee, committees and boards which um. Specifically. Here somewhere, yes, um. The two-year terms on the Affordable Housing Trust, is there any discussion on camp? Um is there a mood to approve the um terms for the Affordable Housing Trust?
So moved second.
John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. And the three-year terms on the board of health, I assume there's a discussion there.
So it came to my attention and I I um that members of the board of health might have spoken to some of the town employees. Of the re- potential restructuring of the Health and Human Services position. Um I don't have any firsthand knowledge, so I'm hearing this on a second hand, I don't know if other board members may have heard something, but I just feel. Before we reappoint. Members of the board of health, it it's gotta be crystal clear that if that happened, that's that is not okay. But if anybody else has any information to share about that.
If we appoint somebody and they do something that we consider egregious, what is our ability to remove?
I I. I'd have to triple, I'd have to double-check with legal, but I believe you have the ability to rescind an appointment.
So I've also heard a member of the board of health walking into a business and acting as a health agent. Asking questions of employees as product and inspections. And again, that's beyond their, this is the health agent's job, not a member of the board of health. Right, uh so, yeah, I think that as long as they stay in their lane. Right, uh I want us, uh we saw signs of a kinder, kinder gentler. It was, you know, it was at the executive, when we were executive session, it was somewhat contentious, but I think that some cool heads prevailed. And then I was very pleased to hear these cool heads prevailed again last Thursday. You forget that just because you can do something, you don't have to do it. And that we all serve, oh, we're here for the 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 residents of Manchester, not to be. Adversarial with them, but to work with them, okay, and let's not forget that they're appointed members and they serve at the, at the pleasure of this. And I think that sometimes that's lost. So that's my, my first answer.
Yeah.
I I mean, like Kathy's saying, I've heard a lot of things, but it's secondhand, I don't have any proof or any. You know. Which way to go with that, but um I think all our boards need to be working together. And if people are willing to do that, then then that's good, but I this constant. Friction and back and forth needs to stop. We need to all be working together to move this town forward, it shouldn't be one board. You know, on their own playing field and we're all over here, that we need to be all working together.
Right, we're all each independent boards, we're independent of the planning board, we're independent of the board of health, et cetera. Um but that doesn't mean we don't work together.
Right.
Right.
With a common goal.
With a common goal, right. Um, yeah, I just, I'm wondering if we need to have um, you know, I know you're doing the MOU about that. Specific position, but do we need to have an expectation-setting meeting or discussion with the board of health?
Well.
And I agree that the last meeting we had with them, the joint meeting, I thought went very well, um but. Like I said, we have some unsubstantiated rumors, we wanna make sure that those things are really not happening because they're not appropriate for a board. And sometimes board members need to understand the distinction between serving on a board and being a town employee and that they're not the same thing.
Uh just to be clear, r- right now, I'm I've committed to potentially making changes to the job description for the team leader position. Um I don't think that we feel the MOU uh was violated in any way. Um however, uh in this effort to try to work better together, um maybe. The two boards, you know, opening up the MOU and maybe making some changes makes sense, but I think we'll get there down the road.
I think this is a, this is a separate discussion though from the MOU. It's about the board of health and them understanding the boundaries of their responsibilities as a board. And not acting as employees or directly. That's probably the best word, it's something a town employee that is not even remotely under their purview. Uh so I I do feel it's a little bit of a separate issue than the specific specificity around the MOU.
I I will say, at the, at the uh, you know, af- after you had left in in the meeting, I was. In Thursday morning uh with the board of health, it it seemed that they agree with to that common goal. That we need to do better for the community to come together and and do what's right, so. I I got the sense from the board of health that they were open to, you know, heading in the right direction. And I spoke with the chairman today and I'm gonna be speaking with him again later this week, so just, you know, adding. I think more communication and um probably be attending their next um. Or health meeting, I think it's next week.
Twenty-fourth of eight thirty. Not that I'm paying attention.
So um. Yeah, I I I think the message, uh I will relay those messages as well.
I think that would be important.
And I I think they understand.
Okay.
After this discussion, is there a motion um on the three-year term to the board of health? Would we consider? Continuing? To allow the current incumbents to um serve with the intention of coming back in a month? To review this situation?
Does that, does that will help you in your negotiation discussions with the boil? Why is it really our concerns?
Does it help you or hurt you?
Yes, I guess that's. I'm not gonna make you jump hard.
No, I think um, I think if you're comfortable making the appointments, I think that shows us a sign. Of stepping, you know, in the right direction and like I said, I think that if if things are, don't head in that direction. Uh the board has, you know, should have the ability to rescind appointments if that, if that becomes necessary. And I think if, I think, you know, kinda respectfully, you know, hanging the appointments over their head may have a. A negative effect towards moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I can see that.
Alright, I move second.
I knew what you were gonna say.
Fine, you seconded my names.
John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Anne says yes.
Leave it for one, was it for me?
They make them all on one.
Yeah, you're nauseous, have you tried them?
I got them all. Yeah, it takes for about a month.
Following the discussion of board members' policies and processes, can we have an administrative report?
Sure, um so uh it's been um a very busy few weeks, uh been continuing to meet with staff. Uh and committees and members of committees um attended. Uh and committees and members of committees um attended. Uh meetings with the planning board, with the finance committee, Board of Health, um. Mason, the Masons regarding condo docs related to the uh senior center. Um, I'll be meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, I see CONCOM and Z B A are meeting this week, so I'm gonna try and attend those meetings as well. Um, this.
Do you need a letter of introduction to your wife?
Yeah, she she understands uh what we signed up for. Uh, this is what happened, you know, when you first start, uh it's really important to be present and to introduce yourself and make the rounds, so. I want to make sure that I'm doing that, making that a priority. Um, meeting with the Harbor Master tomorrow. Um, later this week, I'm I'm on the uh M M A's Energy Policy Committee. We have a meeting later this week that I'll be attending that as well. Uh, we have our first, my first department head meeting. Um, next week, we have a meeting with Senator Tar related to uh highway safety and wrong way drivers. Um, and then, of course, the Festival by the Sea in a couple of weeks, a couple weekend, a couple Saturdays from now. Um, the Republic strike obviously has been taking up a lot of time, um I really want to commend. Uh Chuck and Nate and the D P W uh as well as the admin staff and Tiffany for. You know, how much attention they've put towards this, they've been feeling a lot of calls. Um. It's, it's really frustrating, um, we've had a call with Republic almost daily, there's fourteen communities. Uh, oh, about over four hundred thousand residents affected by this. Um. We so badly want to provide as much information as possible to the public, but things are changing daily. Um, due to uh backup crews, you know, simply not being able to. Get out of the facility to head towards whatever route that they're planned to do, or um wait times getting in and out of drop-off facilities. Um, and they're at, uh they're expecting to have additional resources. In the, by the end of this week, as far as manpower comes, uh. It doesn't sound like the two parties, Republican and Teamsters, are um. Close to finalizing an agreement on their contract. Uh, so I do think we're gonna be dealing with this for a little bit longer, hopefully, we we. The fourteen community uh mayors and town managers urged uh them today that they. Commit to sitting down on a daily basis, uh they met Friday and their next meeting isn't until Wednesday, and you know, we made it clear to them that that's not. That's not good enough, we want both the Teamsters and Republic to be negotiating on a daily basis. Um, we've had uh our T B W, if you recall, stepped up on day one, which was July first, to help with curbside collection. Uh, since then, we've opened expanded hours at the transfer station for the last two weeks. Uh, we may be doing that again this week, and Chuck and I are uh in discussions about, you know, what other um. Supplementary uh services that we can provide to kind of fill the, fill the gap. Um, but they did inform us that they would, they would not be able to collect recycling uh this week. Now, they informed us that. Uh, two weeks ago, but were able to actually pick up recycling. Um. And of course, instead of just being Monday and Tuesday, they were here Wednesday and Thursday and sometimes Friday, so. Uh, we're, we're also, you know, trying to make it a priority that they pick up dumpsters, you know, the town dumpsters. But also, uh, we're trying to get a feel for uh private contracts with Republic, uh you know, our restaurants, um.
Right.
Multi-family housing units, uh trying to understand what the need is there too, to make that a priority uh for Republic as well, so. Um. We we will likely be putting out uh more information tomorrow, um, you know. It's also a tough balance because the reverse nine-one-one calls, uh you know, we want to try and. Give as much information as possible, but at the same time, I feel like residents are kind of getting sick of the reverse nine-one-one calls. Um, so the message really is that, you know, you should put your trash and recycling out uh on Monday or Tuesday. Uh, depending on your route, and if it's missed, let us know and put it back out the next day, and uh if it's. If uh if it's not collected, you have Wednesday transfer station and possibly Friday again as well as Saturday, so if it doesn't get collected. Please, you know, bring, bring down, bring the uncollected trash or recycling to the transfer station.
How is the transfer station being dealt with?
Same, so we're, we're, we've been lucky. Not every town is the same, not every town uh has the same contract. Uh, on these group calls, it's very general discussion. Uh Chuck, that's why I gotta commend Chuck, you know, he has a great relationship with the supervisor staff at Republic, and he's been able to get a lot. More, I think, out of Republic than some of our neighboring communities, so he's been able to get uh them to come and. Replace, you know, the, the uh dumpsters, you know, at the transfer station, and he's been working with Black Earth to staff it. Um. You know, some of, some of our neighboring communities have real public health concerns with overflowing dumpsters, you know. Beverly, Gloucester, Danvers, when they're, where their downtown areas are um. Really hurting, there was a dumpster fire in Danvers uh last week, um so they, they have. Legally, they have kind of a different angle of approach uh with Republic uh related to the public health side. Luckily, we haven't had much of that. Um, but we do want to, we, we may not be aware of some of the private contracts.
All residents jumping into from dump, uh sub, dumpster. So contacted Chuck. Took care of that, now they bought their dumps. So that's, it's not unheard of, and I'm sure we have people just.
It looks as if there's a certain amount of private stuff that gets into the dumpsters at the touch point.
Yeah, I I residents are, uh, you know, do it, trying to find ways to solve the problem themselves. Rather than put them in the dumpsters, please bring, bring it to the transfer station on Wednesday. Or Saturday, and possibly, you know, Fri- we may be opening up on Friday again as well.
Would we possibly extend the hours beyond?
Yes, it's true.
We, we did extended hours, I think we opened it earlier, I don't know if it was.
So, but it's seven thirty in the morning, I think. That was right, that looked pretty early to me.
It was pretty, I, when, at first, when we had the extended hours, it wasn't. Uh, as busy as we expected, I think this weekend was pretty busy though. Um, and then I had the Culver project, which I already reported on, so.
Um, is there a motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Further discussion on the juror. Okay, John?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bye, John.
Thank you. Bye-bye, going for ice cream, they need somebody to pick up the check.